Good evening, I'll call to order the January 6, 2020, meeting of the Arvada City Council. First of all, welcome to all of us for making it through the holidays and being back here. And I'll call upon Mayor Protem Miller for to lead us off.
Thank you, Your Honor, if you would join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you, and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
And although it seems so long ago, we have the minutes of December 16, 2019, a decade ago, any changes, corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Next, we have public comment on items that are not on the agenda. I have one sign up, Lee Strasba. Mr. Strasba? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to talk to you about... It's all in the minutes where we are looking at the structure of the court and hiring process of it. The city council will have a policy where it can legislate, make all the... For the city can make all the appointments. City manager, municipal judge, members to the board, and access are appointed by the city council. Arvada City Court Mission says it provides an individual a fair and impartial judgment process in a timely and ordered manner. If the city is an employer, makes an employer agreement between the city and municipal judge and controls his salary, how would a judge not be biased towards the city? Impartial is impossible. You control his salary and his job. Even if it's hard, even as hard as it is to try to be impartial, psychology says that no judge can be impartial all the time, especially when somebody's got control of him. I would like to know if it's possible to have the city, have Jefferson County appoint a judge and have the city pay his salary to the county so he wouldn't be bonded to the city by salary. Then, the city could place a question on the ballot the next time the city council has an election to keep or replace the judge. He wouldn't have to run for election, he's just up to be approved or disapproved. This would make the judge only beholden to the people of Arvada and not to the city of Arvada in any ways or means. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll have somebody get back to you with a response in terms of the rules and requirements and whether or not that's something that could happen.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address city council at this time? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Young, I live at 7706 Robinson Way here in Arvada. I am very puzzled by the item on the consent agenda to allow a revocable license for a hard surface across McAvoy Park. I took a look at the packet late this afternoon. The drawings were not clear, but it looks like the request is for something like nine feet of McAvoy Park to be paved over. I'm not sure, there is nothing in your packet that I could see that explained why this request was being made. A copy of the request was not in the packet, published for the public. McAvoy Park is Arvada's first park. It's historic. It was our only park for well over 30 years. It is also one of our smaller parks, which has been made smaller by the construction of the five-story apartment building. This revocable permit process was also used for that building to pave over part of the park for sidewalks. And now we're talking about paving over what appears to be, and I could be wrong, about nine feet of park for this driveway. How much longer will it be before we have nothing but a paved park? And what are the implications of this for all of our other parks? I'm very concerned, I'm not sure, I didn't find the packet to be particularly informative as to why this is happening, and I just don't understand why what appears to be secrecy when maybe it's just an oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Devon, since this is on the agenda, is there someone here who can explain that issue?
Planning manager Rob Smentana can address...
Very good, thank you.
Yes, those are existing improvements that were discovered through a subdivision process that they were actually encroaching into the park. So this is just a simple way of making sure we have that. Those improvements can stay legally through this revocable license.
So these are existing...
But these are existing improvements that had already encroached onto the park.
Okay, so we're not paving over anything in addition?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll move on to the consent agenda. We have several items. The first is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $375,000 with Silver Heart Motors for the purchase of eight 2020 Ford Police Interceptor utility units. Next is the issue that was just raised, a resolution declaring approximately .85 acres of city property generally located at the southeast quadrant of Rawson Road and Garrison Street, 5790 Garrison Street, to be surplus and authorizing the city manager to negotiate the conveyance. I'm sorry, that's not what Ms. Young was speaking to. This is a different one with regard to declaring property surplus, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the conveyance of that property. Next one is a resolution adopting the city of Arvada's 2020 legislative agenda. Next is a resolution authorizing the license agreement between the city of Arvada and Old Nate LLC, Colorado Limited Liability Corporation, for the grant of a revocable license for hard surface access drive and curb within McAvoy Park located at the southeast portion of McAvoy Park adjacent to 7207 Grandview Avenue, 5705 through 5711 Teller Streets with the, and I'll indicate for the record without adding any additional hard surface. Next is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Stone and Concrete Inc. for construction of an overflow parking lot at Lake Arbor Police Station in an amount not to exceed approximately $222,000 in the first year. Next is a resolution designating a public place for the posting of notice of meetings for all boards, commissions, and committees of the city council for the city of Arvada for the year 2020. Next is a resolution of the city council supporting the initial resettlement of refugees. Next is a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2020 Great Outdoors Colorado School Playyard Initiative Grant Application for the city of Arvada, Arvada High School Culinary Learning Garden Project. Next is a resolution adopting a separation agreement between the city of Arvada and David Cook. Next is a resolution authorizing an employment agreement between the city of Arvada and Michael S. Metassa, appointing him as interim presiding municipal court judge. And the final one is a resolution authorizing an employment agreement between the city of Arvada and Christopher K. Daly, appointing him as a municipal court relief judge. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolution R-20-001 through R-20-011 be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have a Resolution R-20-012, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Westminster and the city of Arvada regarding the resurfacing of West 88th Avenue. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We, before you, has this resolution that will allow us to collaborate with the city of Westminster in the coordination of street maintenance for West 88th Avenue, west of Wadsworth Boulevard to, I'm sorry, from Wadsworth Boulevard east to approximately Harland Street. And this would enable us to allow for the street maintenance, a mill and overlay project to be completed during the next upcoming construction season by both the city of Westminster and the city of Arvada. And this would obligate us to an expenditure of about $226,000 in coordinated work between the two jurisdictions, and we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no questions.
Okay, I've got one question. Is the center line basically the dividing line between Arvada and Westminster along that section? Is that...
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Ms. Ford, you may proceed.
I move that R-20-012, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Westminster and the city of Arvada regarding this resurfacing of West 88th Avenue be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. I appreciate the work between Arvada and Westminster teams to, you know, it would be ridiculous for one city to be paving one half of the north side or the south side of that street, and so for us to be able to coordinate it and do it at the same time makes a lot more sense. Very good. Next, we have public hearings. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1905-2, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada, Colorado, and Adams County for the purpose of completing a subarea study of the area and the vicinity of Square Lake. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an area that I believe you all know. It's east of Sheridan, roughly west of Tennyson, and south of West 58th Avenue. It's an area which we call Square Lake that lies primarily in unincorporated Adams County, yet has a significant impact on Arvada and on these businesses and so forth that are in the, that are in Arvada, but yet border this area. It's an area that has not received a lot of attention from Adams County because it's kind of in the extreme southeast area of Adams, or southwest area of Adams County. And over time, we've had a number of conflicts occur between property owners in the area who are maintaining fairly industrial-type uses as well as other businesses in the area, particularly on the Arvada side, they're maintaining more light industrial uses. And these uses tend to conflict, and I think the council's been, has received emails from some of the Arvada businesses around some of the, some of the issues that have occurred over time. In the course of trying to deal with this, we discussed with our colleagues in Adams County the idea that we needed to come together and collaborate on developing a subarea plan so that we can determine the kinds of land uses that would be appropriate for that area that would also work and not be in conflict with that area. We also have some challenges around infrastructure. For example, the entrance from Sheridan Boulevard into that area on the west side is actually a CDOT responsibility, and so we want to also create a plan for infrastructure that would also work with the state highway that provides access into that area. So the subarea plan was something that Arvada and Adams County colleagues can, you know, decided to develop. We had a meeting with property owners in the Square Lake area back in about October. I want to thank our community development staff, principally Ryan Stachelsky, Rob Smentana, and Daniel Riley, and our operation for working with their Adams County colleagues to develop the information that's included in this intergovernmental agreement. And by approving this intergovernmental agreement, we'll commit to a contribution, contribution of about $30,000 to work with Adams County and the property owners in that area, both on the Arvada and Adams County side, to develop a subarea plan that will be compatible with all surrounding land uses. And we recommend approval of the ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for council questions or action. Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Pfeiffer, did you have a question?
I do have a quick question. You know, we have a business that went beyond Tennyson, Wonko, and with the regional park, is there any thought of maybe moving that to be all-inclusive with, to Lowell? I know I'm changing a limit, but the reason why is because they still could have conflicts with areas that we still have businesses that are not included in the subareas study.
So increasing the subarea plan towards Lowell?
Just go straight over to Lowell to include the regional park and our Wonko business as part of the study? Sorry, is that a curveball? I should have asked that earlier.
We'll certainly include Wonko.
Go as part of the discussion. In fact, Wonko is a stakeholder. When we had that neighborhood meeting, it was actually held at Wonko.
Okay.
And so they're included in it. Highland Hill is a stakeholder that owns Clear Creek Valley Park, and they will certainly be part of it. And so in terms of cost and those types of things, I think it's appropriate to keep it from Tennyson to Sheridan. It does actually go up to 60th Avenue, and then it'll go all the way down to 52nd as well. And Adams County is covering those portions of the cost, so our money is really only for the Arvada section, but we will certainly be including all of the Arvada stakeholders as part of this.
Okay, as long as we're including that area, because we've invested in that park, one.
Absolutely.
And two, Wonko's a very large employer of ours who does international business, and we want to make sure their voice is heard in the development of this area. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Simpson?
I move that CB-19-052, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada, Colorado, and Adams County for the purpose of completing a subarea study of the area in the vicinity of Square Lake be approved on final reading numbered 4723 and published by title only.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Brown's Greenhouse, Roman numeral II, at Spry Center Preliminary Development Plan, generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Kipling Street and West 72nd Avenue. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Planning manager Rob Smentana will begin this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The applicant, as you mentioned, is requesting a preliminary development plan approval for a 44,000 square foot greenhouse with an additional about 2,000 square foot storage building on the 2.4 acre site, which is located at the northeast corner of 72nd and Kipling. The applicant is requesting three modifications from the Land Development Code. Those are to reduce the front setback from 20 feet to 18 feet, to reduce the parking standards for a 44,000 square foot retail greenhouse from 218 spaces to 18 spaces, and to increase the maximum allowed lot coverage from 30% to 45%. Two of those have to deal with the peculiar size and shape of the site. The parking reduction is simply because this is not a retail greenhouse operation. It's primarily wholesale, although they will have some seasonal sales. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval of the item at their meeting. We do have the mailing affidavit and signed posting log, they are in order. And staff member John Moore is here if you have any questions about the project. And with that, I will conclude.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? I'll have you all sworn in at once. Anyone from the applicant? It's going to be, very good, okay. Do you swear affirm the testimony given these proceedings to be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good. Applicant may make his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Richard Noakes, address 5690 Webster Street, Arvada, Colorado. Representing Brown's Greenhouse, Rob, thank you, you did a great job presenting it. So if you can move to the next slide. So the location is this long, narrow lot that's at the northeast corner of 72nd and Kipling Street. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and most of the neighbors had a lot of questions up front after explaining the process that we're doing and the building that we're doing. I can't remember off the top of my head, but we are increasing the landscaping. So even though the building footprint is larger than the 30%, the landscaping is greater than what's required as well. Next slide, please. So this is a color image. The bottom of it is an aerial view of what the site will look at. The middle image is essentially what the neighbors on the south side of Kipling will be looking at. So you see, there'll be a lot of trees, you know, in front of the building. There's a large green area to the east that will be able to tree as well. The canal, the Crook Canal is on the north side of it, so there's no development on the north side of the property. Next slide, please. So these are the statistics for it, and, wow, my glasses, I need new glasses apparently, I can't see that. Sorry about that, I'm trying to look at the square footage for landscaping that I put on there. There it is, so... Right, but it's like, the percentage? Yeah, 33%, so that's greater than what's required by code. So the request for parking reduction is simply because Brown Greenhouse also exists a little bit north of this property, and so this is, will be a subsidiary use to that use, and it's wholesale use only. There will be some appointment-only deliveries during seasonal, during seasonal sales. So therefore, for that, it's not a retail store, so that's the reason we're asking for a parking reduction because it's not just someplace that the general public can just pull in at any time and buy plants or anything like that. Next slide, please. So with all that being said, the project complies with the comprehensive plan as well as the Land Development Code criteria. In the creative design, we're working with the city to make sure that all of the areas around it are, as far as public access is provided as well. And there's no significant impacts with traffic to that corner, which I think the previous development that was approved back in 2008 was going to have a significant increase in traffic in that area. So this, this will not increase traffic on that corner, so. With that, I think that's about it.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, no need for rebuttal, but if there's any questions from council? If not, we'll take a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I have a question, and I believe this is a question for staff. So this is, we're making an exception here to the parking requirement because this is a wholesale-only business. Is that, once this is built and in place, is there anything in the future that keeps this from becoming a retail business at a later date and then having insufficient parking that flows out onto the street?
Sorry, yes, we would review any new application as to the amount of parking that would be provided on this site, and if they wanted something more intense, they would need, a new user would have to be able to accommodate that parking somehow, whether that be offsite or demolition of some of the buildings. But that's something we would review if there was a change of user.
Yeah, just curious, what causes that to happen, let's say, somewhere in the future, that this property were to become vacant and then become sold, and a new purchaser were to say, "Well, as part of my business plan, I'm just going to start selling retail." Is there some process that they actually have to go through the city where then that parking gets confirmed and would be required to be changed? Or can they just do that? I mean, what, at what point does it go from being a right to use it that way to requiring permission to use it that way?
Yeah, we would review, we get reviews of all new business licenses so we know when there's a change of use, and so we would evaluate that when we get the review of that business license.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
If there are not any questions, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Jones, you have a question?
Just one question on the sidewalk outside of, on, across, on 72nd. I don't recall, is there, how far that sidewalk extends down 72nd on the, on the north side? And, you know, this looks like it's right up against 72nd. Is there a need for that to be detached from 72nd, just from a safety perspective?
Currently, there's no existing sidewalk on the north side of 72nd. We evaluated the land further east of this along 72nd, and there really isn't, we don't own right-of-way or land to detach a walk in the future, so we felt like an attached walk was best in this scenario.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Mr. Pfeiffer, you may make your motion.
Oh, hold on, you brought up a good question. So we're okay with, we're okay with an attached sidewalk at those speeds when it's detached on the south side? So what criteria do we apply on the south side of the road that we're not, other than we don't own right-of-way?
So it's an attached sidewalk, but it's not directly along the through lanes of traffic. It really is along the turn lane for the most part of the project, so the speeds there are slower.
Oh, that part is attached, and then it goes detached from there?
It is attached all the way, but we did evaluate some of the speeds through there and predicted that an attached walk is okay. We also ask for a wider walk than normal.
Because once we set precedent, we set it for the whole road all the way back.
Yeah, it has a buffer of the turn lane and a bike lane.
Yeah, but I'm talking, picture the sidewalk going all the way back eventually, because it's going to dead-end on the property, but when it gets to the rest, it's going to be attached the whole way probably. Because I don't think we'll make it detach later.
So this is also a section where at the eastern edge of this property, the sidewalk will end. There's about, I believe, a three-quarter mile stretch where there's a gap between this sidewalk and then a trail to, further to the east. There's a long-term vision for, from the park system for eventually that trail to connect. Right now, we are anticipating, working further with the Crook Canal to potentially use some of their right-of-way, so the trail would not be attached all along all of 72nd. It would, the vision is for it to eventually become a detached trail.
I mean, we should always try our best when we have the ability to detach sidewalks. We're not a walkable community like Rawson Road, it's far from that right now. We don't want to create this problem another council will have to deal with in 20 years or 30 years. Okay, I'll move forward if you're all right.
You may.
Okay. I move that Brown's Greenhouse II at Spry Center Preliminary Development Plan, generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Kipling and West 72nd Avenue be approved, subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the planning commission. This mo, oh, there. I think that's where I stopped. Started reading more.
Okay, motions for approval, all votes are cast. I remember the previous project that was proposed for this site. This is obviously a much less intensive use, so I will be supporting the motion. That passes seven to zero. That completes our public hearings for tonight. We have three different workshops, or two workshops and some updates from, from our team. The first workshop is a 2019 Community Survey Initial Report. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to have Communications Manager Ben Irwin and Innovation Performance Budget Manager, Innovation Performance Manager Kelly Hartman, who will be helping to present this information to the council tonight.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to talk about the 2019 community survey and to begin a conversation with you on how we, what we're learning from it and how we intend to apply what we've learned. My name's Ben Irwin. As Mr. Devon said, I'm the communications manager for the city. With me tonight is innovation and performance manager Kelly Hartman, as well as Nathan Wigan, who is research director for Northwest Research Group, our consultant partner on the project. So tonight, we want to cover a little bit of background about the community survey, give you an overview of the process and methodology behind what we've done so far, and share a little bit about the results and insights that we've learned so far. And then finally, finish up with some next steps and things that we hope to move forward with in the near future. The city's conducted a community survey every other year since 1997. The community survey helps us understand how residents perceive city services, what their priorities are, and where we can explore improving services and going back to the community for further engagement to understand more about their perspectives and needs. We often describe the community survey as a report card on city services. And that's really half-right. What we've been involved with is an evolution of the community survey, really beginning in the last decade, really tangible changes in the 2017 survey, where we moved to, we were moving to a place where it becomes less of just a report card, but also a catalyst and a kickoff to the next steps towards continual improvement. And so tonight, you may notice a little bit of a difference. We're not presenting a final report to you. We're presenting initial results. And then we want to make it a part of some intensive conversations with you and the community in the coming months and be able to begin to implement and apply and learn from the report right away and integrate it into what we're doing.
So as Ben said, this is not just a standalone project. This is part of our strategic alignment. And it fits right in tandem with our strategic plan. And it supports every one of the work systems which are mirrored with your priority areas. And you might see organizational and service effectiveness really kind of leading the way. And the reason for that is a lot of the results within the survey are customer-focused. And so that's where a lot of those results reside, is within OSE. And you also know that we have a strategic result in the plan that talks about a challenge that we have of getting from a 3.5-star city to a 4.5-star city. And we want to accomplish that by the end of 2023. And that's a pretty lofty goal. And I think Nathan will explain a little bit about that and how difficult that is to achieve. But we want to dream big and deliver. So there are also two key milestones associated with that strategic result. And one is to really look at these lower, lower rated items in the 2019 survey, similar to what we did in 2017, and put action plans together to address those. For 2017, we came together as a leadership team with middle management team as well. We performed SWOT analysis on all the lower rated items and putting action plans together for those as well. So we'll dovetail those action plans from 2017, bring them in with 2019, to really put a comprehensive plan together. So I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan, who is not gonna stand up if you don't mind.
[laughing].
I fell playing soccer. So I'm gonna give you guys a brief overview of the methodology. And this actually has not changed much since we did this in 2017. In short, we worked with Arvada city staff to get a geography file outlining the shape of the city of Arvada. We then worked with our vendors, like our sample providers, to pull a random selection of physical residential addresses from within the city limits. We were able to append a variety of information to each address, such as landline, in several cases, cellphone, and yes, we now can even tie an email address to your physical address. We used these different pieces of information to contact people in a variety of different ways. Some people got letters. Some people got phone calls. Some people got emails. Some people got all three. So we just use a variety of different ways to contact the sample of residents to try to get, our goal was 550 surveys. And we ended up with 598. If those of you remember from 2017, this is fewer. It's about 100 less than we got then. But that's not too concerning. Our results are still strong. We have a margin of error, that very bottom box there. It went from 3.7 to 3.95.
Okay. Before you go on, Ms. Ford, you have a question?
Did. I had one question. This may be for Kelly. In the, on the first page, it talked about going from, going to a survey every year, an annual survey. And I wanted to know what was the reasoning for that?
Sure. So as you know, life moves pretty quickly these days. And so when we're only looking at surveying our community every two years, we're always kind of in that reactive mode. And we're trying to take that data and over time, make decisions. Moving to an annual survey would allow us to have more up-to-date information and feedback from our community to make us much more proactive in how we respond to those comments.
And, and are we finding that we get much varying information from the survey results every two years?
We'll be talking about that a little bit later in this presentation. And there wasn't a lot of change. But what the annual survey or doing this every year also allows us to do is to add specific questions or things or areas that are of concerns to our citizens to get more feedback and really pull that in tandem with Speak Up Arvada. And just to have another tool in our toolbox to get more feedback from the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So to just give a very quick and brief explanation of this margin of error, what we're basically saying is if you were to repeat this survey 100 times, right, 95 out of those 100 times, we're confident that the results would be within plus or minus 3.95% of what you're getting. That's a very, very simple explanation. So you kind of understand what's going on. Who we heard from? So there are three columns to kind of pay attention to here. We're gonna start with the middle column. The middle column contains the population of Arvada from the 2013 to 2017 ACS five-year estimate survey. The far-left column covers this, the scientific community survey that I just described with our methodology. The far-right column was a follow-up survey, open to all residents of Arvada, promoted and hosted through Speak Up Arvada. And what I want to draw your attention to is these are all unweighted data results. And we'll get into what that means in a moment. But one of the things that we try to do when we run a survey at Northwest Research Group is try to get a representative sample of all walks of life. And that includes people that are harder to get a hold of. Typically, younger people are less active. They don't participate in surveys. Minorities don't participate in surveys as much. Same with lower income and so on. So we try really hard to strive for that. And you'll see through the unweighted results on the left column labeled scientific, that we got fairly close, specifically amongst age, gender, race, household composition, and owners versus, well, sorry, housing type, which is single-family versus multifamily. We didn't do so great regarding household income. The income of our, the people who participated was higher than we normally see in Arvada, as well as owners versus renters. And these are areas that we're always striving to improve upon, but this is not unusual when we run surveys. What's kind of spiffy and talks a lot about our methodology is when you compare the results, the unweighted results to our survey compared to the open-up survey, you see that we much more closely align overall with the residents of Arvada.
I just, I would just add, if I could, when Nathan referred to the ACS, that's the American Community Survey run by the Census Bureau.
So I briefly mentioned this concept of weighting. And what we do is our sample isn't quite perfect, as you just saw on that previous slide. So we take our scientific sample and we say, "What do we have to do to make it look like the actual population, specifically in terms of age, gender, income, et cetera?" So we do some spiffy math. And we come up with this little weight, which is just a small way of kind of like tweaking. We can say, someone who's, you know, 18 years old and lower income, there, when they're aggregated up, they will count as like 1.12 people, right? Then we have someone who's a higher, you know, who's overrepresented in our sample, they might count as like 0.98 when you're aggregating all of this up. That's a lot of words. A few things to note are, it's commonly done in market research, especially when you know what your base population looks like. We know what the population of Arvada looks like because the Census tells us. It accounts for imperfections in the sample. And what that means is in two years, when you repeat this survey, if a result changes, you will know that the result changes because that's an actual change in belief or change in attitude, as opposed to, we now talk to a different set of people. Like, we talk to younger people in two years, or we talk to older people, or we talk to more people from here or here. And to kind of further alleviate any concerns that weighting may have, we have the chart here. And it is, I originally picked three or four random charts throughout this, this presentation. But I wanted to show you guys what the impact is. So this is the overall quality of life. The dark green is, exceeds expectations. The light green is meets. Neutral is yellow. And then does not meet expectations is in red. And the first two columns there show you the differences in distribution between the weighted and the unweighted survey. There are a couple of differences, but they're small. They're all within the margin of error. And there's nothing that seems out of line here. And then just to give you an initial taste of the open survey, which we did a little, which we'll get into a little later, we have the results there. And you'll see, this will be trend, there's a little bit lower score overall when we're talking about the Speak Up Arvada survey.
Okay. So just to wrap up the discussion of who we, who participated in the survey and the data that we had, that we collected, there's tiny blue dots on this map. It kind of shows the distribution of participants across the city. And one thing we did in 2017 was we got those results based on police sectors. And sort of carrying on that theme of trying to do more with the community survey and find ways to better understand the voice of the customer in the results, we've actually gotten results this time around that are at the council district level as well as the neighborhood level. And some of the next steps include going back to the 2017 results and applying the same type of analysis so that we can do year over year on those breakdowns as well. That kind of naturally leads us into the results. And we thought we'd kick off with just some initial takeaways. Overall, a major takeaway is overall, the results are stable from 2017. Not a lot has changed. Nathan will get into it a little bit more in just a moment. But the city's 3.5-star rating has not changed. Few individual measures show any real statistically significant change over two years ago. However, the results do show opportunities to improve. We'll talk a little bit about the need to think more about how we plan for growth and how we convey information around planning for growth. Transportation issues emerged even more strongly this time around. Improving the business environment to provide a diverse set of services for people continues to be a key driver in moving our overall rating forward. And then finally, the need to engage longer-tenured residents. We'll also talk about that in a moment. Finally, we saw a shift in, in our priorities as a community through a comparison of five different focus areas across the city. So we're looking forward to digging into that a little bit as well. I want to kick off a discussion of the five-star rating. That's kind of the main, the real takeaway from the survey. And the reason why we're excited to use this, this tool is that it takes really tangible areas of city services and aggregates them into a star rating that we can really pull apart and target the lowest, sort of low-hanging fruit to be able to move the needle forward. Northwest Research Group's five-star rating is based, sort of like a city health index. It's based on communities all over the country. And, you know, in 2017, we rated it as a four-star city. And that allowed us, gave us information that we could use to target and try to move the needle over the next period of time. I'm gonna turn it over to Nathan to talk a little bit about the five-star rating, how the methodology or weighting changed, and what that impact has been.
So for those of you who here in 2017 and you first heard the words 3.5-star rating, you're probably going, "Well, that's wrong. We're not the same." And what happened, as Ben briefly mentioned, is we did change. We had started looking at this in 2017. We changed the methodology for developing our five-star rating. The initial methodology formula was developed in 2007. So this is prior to the recession. This was 12 years ago. Over the years, we had started to notice that people's priorities and people's opinions have been changing a bit. So starting at the end of 2017, we thought about remodeling this and redesigning it. So for the next 18 months or so, we ran several tests with a handful of statisticians, where we tested a variety of different question combinations. So we even tested the questions we used. And testing kind of how a model would work and what would end up being a stronger model. So earlier in 2019, I was about to say earlier this year, we finally arrived at a model that we were all happy with. And that's the updated model. The advantages of this model is it is stronger. It's more granular. So now we have the ability to be able to dig in a lot more. Instead of you just getting an actual rating of like 3.5 stars, I can dig into an individual and actually score them on a very, very long scale, which means that when we perform additional analytics like key drivers, it's much stronger. But the takeaway in how the new model works, if you look at the two charts that are on the right-hand side there, the original model was primarily driven by this concept of comparability to other communities. It's saying, you know, compared to other communities, do you feel that Arvada is better or worse than? And that was the largest driver. And what we found has changed since 2017 to now is people's opinions on that have kind of shifted. There's no longer this one big thing that kind of controls the narrative. You have a lot more even balance amongst these five areas. And what's risen to the top is this value of services for tax dollars paid. So you have a little bit more money conscientious people. The disadvantage is that this has changed the star rating for nearly every city that we have done. When we go back and we run this new model on old data, we run the old model on new data, there is a change and there is a difference. And so if we run Arvada's 2019 statistics using the 2017 data, you get the same thing, a four-star rating. If we run the 2017 data using the new model, you get a 3.5. So it's not a downgrade in any way, shape or form. It's just a change in the way that the model works to alleviate concerns.
Thanks, Nathan. And I just wanted to interject, just for folks that might be viewing at home. We're trying to draw very specific connections between what we're presenting here and the actual survey that people took. So it's important for people to know that the five-star rating is based on five questions that happened at the beginning of the survey.
Yes. Right, right after we find out basically who we're talking to, we ask these five questions. So as I just mentioned, Arvada comes out with a 3.5-star rating. It is the same as 2017 if we use the same calculation. And there's kind of two interesting things. There's, you know, there's a decent amount of division. You have about 32% or about a third of your residents who rate Arvada as being a less-than-three-star city. And these are the people that we are trying to dig into. And we're trying to find out why. What is it about these people that they're not quite as happy as we want them to be? And that's what a good bulk of this report's gonna cover. There's, the good news is, 44%. You know, so nearly half of your residents rate the city as being four stars or higher. So you're on the right track. But the idea is to find out what is happening with these people who are less than happy and what can we do to help move that needle.
So we're not just satisfied by looking at a five-star rating and looking at other clients that Northwest Research Group surveys. We're on a journey to excellence. And we're using the Baldridge framework. And one of the key pillars to that Baldridge framework is looking at benchmarks and comparisons. And so this slide, while it has a lot of information, just gives you a little bit of insight of the cities that we're looking at to benchmark with. So you'll see our neighbors listed. We have Westminster, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Boulder. And then you'll see Fort Collins, Irving, Texas, Coral Springs, Florida, and Germantown, Tennessee. They have all obtained the Baldridge award. So those are our Baldridge cities that we're comparing against. And then you'll see Castle Rock, Renton, Washington, and Bellevue, Washington, which are clients of Northwest Research that are five-star, in the same five-star rating system that we are. So we want to benchmark against all of these people because we're not just satisfied with saying, "Okay, here are our results. Are they good? Are they bad? And how do we move the needle?" We want to compare and be world-class in this arena. So, yep.
I have a question on the survey responses of all the different cities. I was noticing that with Wheat Ridge and Irving, Texas, and Coral Springs, Florida, that you had a lot more survey responses. And I was just curious, did you mail out more to begin with? Or did you use some methodology to, to have more response?
Those specific cities, she has the like middle column there. They were performed using a completely separate methodology from a completely separate vendor.
So Northwest Research Group is Castle Rock, Renton, Washington, and Bellevue, Washington. And then in the fourth column, you can see who the survey vendor is that they use. So there's a variety of vendors that all these different cities use. Did that answer your question, Nancy?
So in other words, there's probably different methodology that was used.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question.
Yep. So we have two examples. This is the first example, just to kind of show you what we're doing. And this is a question, the direction the city is headed. This is a common question that municipalities ask on their, their citizen survey. And if you look at the, the first graph in the middle, you'll see that that And if you look at the first graph in the middle, you'll see that that is Arvada's data, and that we've been trending up every two years since 2013 on this. But then if we just look at that in a vacuum, we really don't know, how do we compare with anybody else? And so in the lower left-hand graph, you'll see how we compare with our neighbors. And while we're doing well, there's some things that Westminster is doing that we may be able to learn from. And so that gives us opportunity to reach out to them, to look and meet with them, and to share best practices, and to use their best practices where it fits within Arvada to make things better for our citizens. And then if you look in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see those Baldridge cities and how they're performing and how our results compare to theirs. And I will point out in that graph as well, the dark green column, that's the U.S. average. And so again, we don't want to be average, we want to be exceptional. And so this is how we're starting to look at all of our data to make sure that we're comparing against different cities, world-class cities, and our neighbors as well. The next slide is very similar, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it's the same type of thing where we're looking at that value for tax dollars. And this is a tricky question for municipalities to ask. And if you'll look at, there's a piece missing down from the bottom, which is Fort Collins, who does not ask their citizens this question on their survey. But, but we want to, and we want to make sure that our citizens are getting good value for their tax dollars. And you can see that we're trending up since 2015. But again, we've got some competition with Wheat Ridge, I'm sorry, with Westminster and what they're doing, but we're above Lakewood and Wheat Ridge. So this is the type of data and the analysis that we're going to be doing for all of our measures to make sure that we're competitive.
I was just going to add, we're really excited about this part of it. It's another example of how we're kind of hitting the ground running with the community survey. These results are already in Clearpoint. We're already starting to use them and compare them to, just as you see here, these illustrations actually came straight from Clearpoint. So it's just another example of how we're really trying to integrate and use the results right away. Another tool in the toolkit is really to dig deeper into this is key driver analysis. We've looked at the high-level results, and now it's kind of time to take a look at and continue that through line of understanding how the questions we've asked and the responses we've received tie to some of the high-level conclusions that we're talking about. Key drivers analysis really looks for a correlation between Northwest Research Group's five star rating and how people feel across the different measures that we, or questions that we've asked them. It helps us understand perhaps where to focus resources. It's the part that helps us understand or contributes to our understanding of where we need to engage more with our community and dig deeper.
So while this is a busy slide, it's probably my favorite slide. I kind of get excited about this one, so I apologize. But this is kind of our playbook as an organization. And the way you look at this, if you look at the Y-axis, that's really looking at satisfaction levels and how satisfied our citizens are. And then the X-axis is looking at how important things are. And so what we really need to look at are the three blue boxes at the top, which are community, governance, and transportation. Those are the three areas that we can really focus on and really move the needle. And so the dark blue boxes are what we want to focus on. Those are the areas in which they're important to our citizens, but our citizens aren't really satisfied with what they're being provided. So if you look under community, you'll see that helping to create a competitive business environment and planning for growth that adds to quality of life are really important, and we need to focus on them. Under the governance dimension, we need to focus on providing information in an open and transparent manner and seeking input and involvement from the community. And then when we get to transportation, we need to focus on traffic signal timing and the level of congestion. And the interesting thing there is, if you see that street maintenance is actually in the light blue, which wasn't quite as important and significant as that congestion and signal timing. There is one blue box that's under public safety. And you'll notice that public safety is a light green, which means it's not a key driver. But that blue box, we think there's a reason for that. In 2019, uh-oh, we lost our screen. There we go. In 2019, we changed that question. In 2017, the question read professionalism of our police officers. And so we wanted to broaden that question because code enforcement had moved over under public safety, and there were a lot more people working other than just police officers within that unit. And so we broadened it to say, public safety professionals. And what we think happened is, when people were responding to this, that they might have taken into a factor, into account, Arvada Fire, or Jeffcom, or anybody else that's kind of in that public safety professional realm. So it's something that we're going to look at and make sure that we're not missing something, but we think we might have kind of not hit the mark on that question. So it's definitely a question we'll look at again when we ask it.
Actually, I'd say you probably did hit the mark because Jeffcom does impact our community. Fire District does impact our community.
True.
We may not have direct control over, but we have this agreement thing that we can pull out once in a while.
You're correct.
And we need to hold those individuals or organizations accountable for a level service. It might not be our fine police officers, but this could be other people.
You're correct.
Okay. So I think there's something there that I would not get rid of, but we should probably dissect that a little bit more and keep it on the radar, though.
We definitely will.
I think the question is, how do you differentiate? And I think it would be good for us to be able to do it, Mr. Marion.
Yes.
Kelly, I have a question about just this table. You were saying the X-axis is level of importance. Was that chosen by the survey respondents? Or who chose what was more important?
That's derived importance, we use a regression model.
Okay. The reason I say that is, is that previous community surveys and the things I recall are that the things that people think are important to them generally is things like parks and like public safety, and these things that fall on the opposite end of what this box says. And, you know, I, you know, things, concepts like a welcoming and supportive city, I've never heard that as being important to the residents. What I've heard is, is that they've got parks accessible to them, that it's safe in their neighborhood, those types of things.
You'll see that a little bit later in the presentation where we kind of cover that and looking at those main themes, and some of those have shifted a little bit. So I'm hoping we can address that question when we get to the slide in the presentation, and it'll be a little more clear.
Okay. So would you, yeah, tell me how we got this table set up the way it is?
Yep, so there's two pieces of analysis that are run, well, actually like eight, but two broad pieces of analysis that are done to create this table. So the first one's called a factor analysis. So there were 31 questions asked in the survey, and I tell my software to say, group these, and it groups them. And I look at it and say, okay, that makes sense, that doesn't. And then after it groups the questions, we run what's called a regression. And a regression analysis, you'll actually see an example in a few slides of kind of a raw output from regression. What it basically does is it tells you if some independent variable or any one of these, you know, boxes, has a statistically significant impact on the overall five star rating. So the five star rating is this ginormously scaled index. It has a lot of variance in it, and we use these 11-point scales that have a lot of variance. So we have a lot of granularity, and we say mathematically, there is a, put it simply, there is a strong correlation between how someone responds to planning for growth, which we'll see in like a slide or two, and their overall rating of Arvada. And what happens is things like safety and things like park, they don't show up as being incredibly important in key drivers because there's no real variance. People are, they're happy, they feel safe, people aren't getting gunned down in the streets. And so no matter how they feel about the rest of the city or Arvada as a whole, you know, their perception of safety doesn't impact that. So that's why it doesn't show up as a key driver here. The way that we have been discussing it internally is, this really kind of tells you what it takes to move the needle step up.
This isn't the importance to the residents of Arvada, it's the importance to what makes the rating go up or down.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
And I would just add, they're all important. Everything up here is a priority. It's a matter of whether or not we're trying to maintain where we're at, and what given finite resources should we focus on to try to move the needle? So hopefully, what we've conveyed a little bit is that our use of the key driver analysis is really boiling down to two key questions. Who is and is not satisfied with the city's performance, and where can we focus to improve those perceptions and actually improve our performance? So again, to draw that direct connection, we're going to focus on planning for growth, competitive business environment, and transportation as issues that kind of rose to the top so far as key drivers that we want to talk to you about. So when we look at planning for growth, the question really was, is the city meeting your expectations with regard to planning for growth in ways that add value to one's quality of life? And the reason that this is kind of rising to the top is there's a very strong correlation between how people feel about how the city's planning for growth and what their five star rating is likely to be. We have tried to illustrate that in the table. And so immediately, you start to see some opportunities. Nathan and Kelly shared that we really want to focus on that group that's not satisfied. We have 108 participants in this survey who rated us as two stars in this area. And so what we want to try to do is target those people. Overall, Nathan mentioned there were 31 measures. Overall, the planning for growth measure was the fourth lowest rated in the survey.
I guess I've got a question on that as, okay, we've got a portion of the population that's not happy, not satisfied, but if we totally focus on them, are we then starting to create problems with the vast majority who are satisfied? You know, if the steps that we take to make the minority happy tick off the majority, don't we end up with a worse score and actually decrease the wonderfulness of our city?
Absolutely. We need to be balanced about this. I mean, I think another question that we don't address in the survey here, and Nathan, check me if I'm wrong, but we ask a question of whether or not people felt growth has positively, negatively, or in a neutral perspective impacted their lives. 44% of people said that it was a positive impact on their life. That's good. There's 40% that said it was a negative impact on their life. We need to look at those numbers, engage both sides, and definitely do, continue to improve how we convey what the city's doing. A lot of this, and we've talked about it a lot, a lot of it has to do with what we're conveying to the community and how we share information, how we engage with them, as much as it is what our actual plans are. So it's a whole portfolio of things, and balance is key.
To kind of chime in and give some slight anecdotal information from what we see doing a lot of these surveys all over the place, you know, the one thing is, it's not to just like go out and suddenly stop growth or change something magnificently. That's not at all what this is trying to say. You know, what really this does is it says, when you're going to go out and you're going to talk to your residents, this is what you need to talk to them about. Talk to them about, why is this a pain point for so many of you, and is there something that can be done to help improve it? And it could, literally, we've seen this happen. It could just be they didn't have a strategic growth plan published on their website. It could be something that simple, or it could be much more involved.
But we need to look, and we need to explore that further. The next slide kind of speaks to that. As you break it down, connects the question we asked to the demographics of the people who answered it. And so I think this is a little bit intuitive, at least from my perspective, where people who've lived here less than five years have a much better, more favorable view of the plan for growth. As people's tenure in the city increases, they spend more time here, they tend to feel a little bit more, generally, a little bit more negatively about it. And so that just tells us that we need to concentrate on those groups and ensure that we understand their needs, and we're doing, and continually improving what we're sharing with them about our plans and how we involve them in it.
So then, again, when we look at competitive business environment, this too aligns with the five star rating. And the question text that we ask is helping to create a competitive business environment that supports new business, that offers diverse shopping, dining, entertainment, and other options that consumers want. So it's not just building and bringing new things in, it's, is it the right fit, and are we meeting those community needs? So if you go to the next slide, you'll really see that, and this might not be a surprise either, but people in District 1, 2, and 3 are fairly happy with what's happening. But District 4, they're not as happy with what's happening with competitive business environment. And so as we bring new things on board and new development into that area, that is an opportunity for us to kind of reach out and to make sure that we're meeting the needs of that community.
Well, we had a ribbon cutting tonight for a new business in Northwest Arvada.
Yay.
We continue to have those, I'm thinking those ratings are going to get better for District 4.
Yep.
And so I get the fun slide here. This is a deep dive into the overall area of transportation. Where the previous two focused on one specific question, this actually focuses on five. I mentioned doing this factor analysis earlier, and what we basically do at the end of it is we create a mean score that says, each respondent is given an average score based on how they answer each of these five questions. The overall condition of the streets, the traffic signal timing, the level of congestion, the convenience and accessibility, and the plowing of the streets. And, you know, we're like, well, why does this matter? Well, we'll see in a couple of slides that we discussed this trade-off analysis and this max diff, and transportation issues are significantly more important, as stated by residents now than they were in 2017. The other thing to note is that out of the 31 attributes asked about in 2019, the three lowest all deal with traffic. That's the signal timing, level of congestion, and there's overall condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I got it right. You know, but finally, what we're seeing is while each one of these individually doesn't have a very large impact on your average resident's overall rating, when we look at them in this combined scatter plot to the right, you can kind of see that there's a pattern that emerges. These dots basically represent one person. The horizontal or X-axis represents their mean score from 0 to 10 across these five questions. And the Y-axis, the vertical axis, represents their star rating on our scaled variable. And you can see the general shape is that they're kind of clustered around this line, and they're kind of moving up and to the right. And so it means that the happier they are with transportation in general in Arvada, the happier they are with the city as a whole, or the higher the star rating they provide the city. So it's an area to focus on.
Go ahead.
Can you go back a slide, the one before this one? The one that had the table, that one there. On this table, you have two questions or two responses that they can talk about that where it does not meet their expectations, and three where it does meet their expectations. Is that not a biased question where you have three responses that they can say, it meets my expectations, and two that says it doesn't meet my expectations?
So the specific labeling that we're giving it right here is actually labeled after the fact. We ask them on a scale of 0 to 10, where 0 means does not meet expectations at all, and 10 meets greatly exceed expectations, how would you rate this? And then it's just a zero with does not at all, 10 with greatly exceeds, and then everything else is left blank. So the respondent isn't in any way led or have a label. They just basically pick a spot somewhere from 0 to 10.
And so how did you come up with these concrete statements from a ratio scale?
So we used to, way back in the day, use five-point scales. And we made a transition to 11-point scales about five or six years ago, and we just basically combined. So does not meet expectations at all is the combined score of 0 and 1 on a 10-point scale. Does not meet expectations is 2, 3, and 4, meets is 5, so we could call it neutral. Exceeds is 6, 7, 8, and greatly exceeds is 9 and 10.
I think that's stretching it, frankly, but keep...
We can label them any way you'd like, it's just a label.
There's a funky way of interpreting ratios, yeah.
Go ahead.
We can follow up. This is part of the process. It's about having the conversation and a dialogue about it, so we'll follow up with you.
So just to piggyback on this transportation question, again, Nathan talked about those three areas, and that's overall condition of the road, traffic signal timing, and level of congestion. And again, you can see where the scores were lowest in that level of congestion. And I know I'm going to hopefully make Dawn Wick smile. This really kind of lends itself to that holistic approach to street maintenance where we really do need to look at traffic signal timing and level of congestion in with just the condition of the road surface and have that holistic approach.
Mr. Jones?
You know, just a thought, and I'm not expecting a response, but one of the challenges with kind of the congestion question is the overlapping of jurisdictions in the county, and the state, and the city. And most citizens, including myself, didn't really understand how that intermixing happens. And so, you know, I don't know if there's a better way of getting that... And so, you know, I don't know if there's a better way of getting at the real congestion concern. My sense is that some of those are state issues. I'm not looking at you. It's not your problem.
Well, one thing that we did do in 2019, because that is something that we're very conscious of, in the 2019 survey, we did call out those state highways in the question.
Okay.
So that people understood, hopefully, that Ward, Sheridan, Wadsworth, all of those are state highways. So we did call that out in the survey.
And that's good. You know, it's not to say that we don't have congestion issues.
Correct.
But just making sure that we're identifying them, and then, you know, if being able to control what we can control, so.
I'll defer that to Bob Fiver.
That's right. And everything else we're doing is to stare at Bob.
I'm going to talk to my council member about taking care of the wind in his district later.
I'm on it. I'm on it.
I'll work on the highway stuff as long as you get the wind to calm down.
I'll get the wind taken care of tonight.
Touche. But, I mean, that's a good point. I think what I struggle with, it goes back to that public safety, you know, question of, I don't, no matter what education we do around roads, county, state, city, no one's ever going to get it right. I mean, just following Highway 72 from Ward to 64th to Indiana to Highway 72, that's crazy. And I don't even think anyone will understand how many jurisdictions you went through that owns what part of Indiana, you know, and who responds even from public safety on what part of the road.
Yeah, that's a challenge for sure.
That one's a challenge, but I think if I was to take the same comment I made about public safety, we should value that feedback and work more closely with our state counterparts and our county counterparts and advocate for our citizens and not put the onus on them to decide who to complain to because they cross three jurisdictions within pretty much technically our city boundaries.
Well, and that's the whole thing, is that they know they can complain to us.
Right.
And so it's, what can we do then to work with the state or the county to get a remedy on issues? So, but yeah, I mean, citizens want one throat to choke, and I think that's ours.
Yeah, I think it's ours. We can always tell them to call the commissioners. Those county commissioners are good.
Thank you for that feedback.
So we also mentioned at the beginning that we did the Speak Up Arvada kind of open survey. And the question that is going to be on a lot of people's minds are, are the results the same? And the answers are, well, mostly, but there are some differences. The similarities, well, actually, let's start with the differences. The differences are, the open survey generally provided lower scores almost across the board. Not all of them were significantly lower, but they were generally just a little bit lower in terms of the overall scores. But the overall storylines that we've been talking about were the things that seemed to matter most to the residents. The planning for growth, the investing in businesses that give them variety in transportation still hold true. They're still very important. And the same stories that we've been talking about in terms of demographics and the different residents and how they feel, where like longer-term residents are a little less happy with planning for growth than newer residents, that is still true as well. So while the specific numbers may have shifted down a little bit of a notch, and I have some theories on this that I can test, the storyline, what can be done to help your residents feel better, is the same.
Question on that is, in your experience around the country doing this, have you typically found open surveys to be more negative?
Yes.
So it's the angry people who are going to be more likely to spend the time to respond to surveys?
I stand by my statement, which is I have some theories which I'm working on testing.
What I would call maybe the squeaky wheel, but that's okay.
So we're kind of hitting the home stretch. You know, Nathan mentioned this idea of max diff analysis, and I wanted to take a moment to explain that because we saw some movement between 2017 and 2019. Essentially, we're asking, in this question or a series of questions, we're asking people to, we're forcing people to make a choice across five priority focus areas that we identified in 2017. Maintaining a city safe from crime, maintaining and expanding the city's transportation network, maintaining parks, trails, and open spaces, maintaining an efficient and effective local government, and attracting new industries and businesses to the city. All of these things, this is not a relative kind of statement about what's going well and what isn't going well. It's trying to determine what people care most about in a given moment. What is their highest priorities? Most of the time, if not all the time, cities rate public safety as their number-one priority, perhaps, not surprisingly. But what we saw, and hopefully you can tell, the lighter blue here is from 2017, and the transportation issue, parks, trails, and open space, and an effective and efficient local government, we're all kind of on par. They all shared a kind of relatively similar order of priority. In 2019, what we saw was a shift towards transportation. So that's, again, a reason for our key takeaway. People are much more focused on transportation issues this time around than they were in 2017.
So real quick, can I ask the question around, so maintain and expand cities' transportation network. Transportation is probably a broad word. So did we qualify? Because, I mean, when I, there's, transportation can be roads and bridges and, but also could be mass transit and other items. Was there any qualification around, the word "expanding" throws me a little bit, but the expanding the city's transportation, was there any thought of, was that relating to mass transit more? Or, I don't know if people want us to keep widening roads or making more of them, so...
Right. So I'm going to let Nathan take it, but I would just say that there was an emphasis on trying to keep these the same as in 2017, to be able to understand. I hear your point.
For the questions maintaining and expanding, there's two, there's an "and."
Right.
So expanding, I just want to make sure I understood what it meant by expanding transportation.
So in the actual questionnaire text, yes, there is some expansion on it. Each one of these categories, this is like a shortened version of what the respondents either read or heard. You'll have the opportunity, if you haven't already, to take a look specifically at what was asked. There's just too many words for me to go over right now.
Yeah, but did include transit? I guess that's a quick question I'm having to include.
Such as maintenance, use smart technology to manage services like traffic signaling, modeling, and planning connections to public transportation.
All right, so it's broad. It's broad. I'm just curious around the whole RTD, you know, bus, since we only service technically half our community, not the full, that has some impacts on why that's becoming more and more important. I've heard more from constituents out in District Four interested in bus service, but there isn't any that's convenient for them to use. So I'm just curious if that's why that importance jumped up in two years? Especially because I was thinking back in 2017, it was always about how bad our roads were, not necessarily how we operate and move transit and mass transit. I think that topic is elevating more, so.
Yeah, it speaks to the need to dig into the results a little bit more, and I don't know, can we do this analysis, I'm putting Nathan on the spot, by council, district?
Yes.
Yeah.
I can do this by person.
Well, let's not do that. But we can break it down in some of the more expanded areas that we've been looking at in the 2019 survey.
It would just be interesting in our strategic discussion this Friday. I think this might be a topic of interest.
Great, thank you. So just to kind of come full circle, we kind of led the presentation by acknowledging that not a lot has changed. And just wanted to kind of wrap up by saying, of the 31 questions that we asked residents on that scale of zero to 10, 87% rated the city at six or higher across those 31 measures. So that's pretty consistent with 2017, and it shows that we're generally doing a pretty good job. We're doing really well. Again, we had 26 questions that were the same in both 2017 and 2019, and 19 stayed the same, and only seven changed slightly. So, you know, we've maintained our performance and are being rated fairly highly.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. So thank you for awesome presentation. I know you have a couple more slides, but I've had this question since like the third slide because I didn't want Ms. Hartman to tell me it was coming up. But I've seen your next two slides. So in the very, very beginning, Ms. Hartman mentioned that from the 2017 survey, what you wanted to do was really be intentional to increase from the four, but we know it's 3.5 with this new rating, from 2017 to 2019. But we were intentional, we created initiatives, and we didn't move the needle. So my question is, what are we going to do more quickly to move the needle before 2021? And first, can I just say how ironic it is that our residents that scored our, scored us low on our ability to ask for their input on a survey, asking for their input, that made me laugh a little bit.
Well, the first part I'd say is that these results do tend to move slowly, and we are needing to understand and look at some of the work that Kelly was looking at or presented earlier to sort of see what some of the trends are with some of our peers. So we need to do more work to understand that. And I think it also speaks, I'm going to let others speak to this as well, but it also speaks to our urgency that we feel around the survey right now, that we've, I was going to save it till the end, but I wanted to thank the other team members, the city team members that have already started to roll up their sleeves and look at some of this. Just, we shared a draft of results at the same time we shared them with council, and folks are already pitching in and starting to look at what can be done to learn more or start to improve or select areas for improvement. So it just speaks to the urgency that we feel around the results and the urgency we feel to take it further faster. Do you want to say more?
And I know Mark's waiting to say something, too. But, you know, to me, this is all about performance and performance management. And so when we look at some of these results and we see they're not where we want to go, that's where we do need to roll up our sleeves and dig in and put in action plans to say, this is how we're going to address them, and hold ourselves accountable to those action plans and really completing those things and trying to move the needle. None of this is easy. You know, it's going to take some time, but I think through performance management and through our bondage journey, it really sheds a light on the importance of what our customers are telling us. And it's imperative for us to really take this information, take it seriously, and do something with it. And I don't think all communities do that, but we are one that is going to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I agree that we are amazing and that you guys are fantastic and amazing. And I love that you want to know the answers to them and dig in. What I'm nervous about is analysis paralysis.
Do you want to jump in, Mark?
Well, I would just say that last year, in 2018, we took the information from the 2017 survey and conducted monthly SWOT analysis of each of the areas that showed where we needed to improve. And through that SWOT analysis, I think what's emerging there is some very intentional actions that we need to take. Some of those actions we're already starting to take. I would submit that the communication engagement strategy that Ben has been working on that was presented to the city council a couple of months ago is in direct response to the fact that many of our residents don't feel that they're being listened to and that they want more avenues to participate in local government and governance kinds of issues. So there's a lot of things that are kind of starting to germinate. Now we've just got to put more momentum by them and get them going so that we can see improvement in 2021, and we can get to the 4.5-star rating in 2023. If you don't set the goal, if you don't set the target, you're never going to get there. Will we get there by 2023? I don't know. But we're going to be darn sure we're going to try. And it's through this analysis, and Dot, I know how you feel about analysis paralysis. And so as long as you're on city council and reminding me of that, I can assure you we will do everything we can to keep moving forward as fast as we can.
So as Ben said, we're on the home stretch. We're showing this graphic one more time because it is an important piece of the puzzle for us. And while we want to concentrate on the dark blue items, like Mayor Williams said, we can't forget about the other things as well. So we can't forget about the things that we're doing well and that we need to maintain, or the things that people are happy with and they're not as important to us, and so how do we deal with those things? We need to be conscious of everything on this list. We need to concentrate on the blue items to move the needle, but we can't forget about everything else that appears on this sheet because it's all important for us to focus on as we move forward with the survey results.
You don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. You don't, stop doing the things you do right, okay?
If it ain't broke, don't try to fix it. I want to just wrap up with next steps. You know, we want to continue this conversation on Friday as part of the retreat with city council. We're looking forward to that. After we've had those conversations and had a chance to digest the feedback a little bit, we're going to update the report and finalize it, distribute it to council, and to the community in February. That's going to really kick off an outreach campaign to try to spread the results out to the community in more consumable chunks. We won't just send them a PDF of the report. We're trying to break out the results into meaningful sets that people can, that we can attach to other things we're talking about to help clarify context around our projects that we're communicating about. So we really want to develop a type of toolkit that can, anyone on the city team can use to help explain why we're looking at a certain thing or asking and engaging the community on a certain topic. We're going to systematically apply, as Mr. Devon and Kelly mentioned, we're going to systematically apply the results in ways that improve service to the community. And touching on this slide from very early on, we're going to explore, you know, we're going to develop action plans and explore an annual survey as part of the milestones to the city council's strategic result. With that, I just wanted to say again that we've gotten a lot of support from not only this team, but also people involved in communications and engagement, the leadership team, and across the city team. Really appreciate that support.
I would just like to add, on your site, your Google site for your council retreat, there is, under each work system or priority area, there's community survey results, and it says coming soon. They'll be there tomorrow. So there, the survey is there along with the 2017 survey, but all of the questions per each work system will be on that site. So feel free to go in and take a look at those. They've been added, but we haven't, I'm sorry, Dot, had time to analyze them yet. But the data is there for you to look at. And just as a reminder, to access that site, please use your city email address. It doesn't work if you use a different email address. And if you have any problems getting into that site, don't hesitate to let me know. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Very good. Good presentation. We look forward to this being part of one of the many tools that we use to really get input from our citizens and make sure we are moving the city in the right direction. And I recognize that it is a bit like a ocean liner. You can't turn it too quickly. It's sort of a slow process at times. Okay, does anybody need a quick stand-in place or break? How much longer presentation do we have?
Oh, it depends on you.
Oh, well, in that case, let's do a quick stand-in place. Okay, thank you for that. We'll reconvene. And Ryan, we'll see how long council keeps this going tonight.
Do you wanna, I mean, I can, oh, okay, sorry. I just wanna make sure there wasn't a formal, so, Ryan Stachowski, thanks for having us. I really just wanted to say welcome, and introduce you all to Patty McCarthy. Of Laura, Loretta, excuse me, Loretta Daniels had been our long-term, long-range planner for a number of times, and she was, had an opportunity to take another long-range manager position in Arapahoe County, and so, but we were fortunate enough to have Patty. And so, Patty comes to us by way of Edgewater and Westminster before that, and she's our new senior long-range planner, and I just really wanted to do the introduction for her. So, she'll present the demographics tonight.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I, I believe you received in your packets a, this is our VADA demographics supplement, so I was just going to go over that as quickly as you would like, or if you have questions, please let me know and interrupt at any time.
You'll find that none of us are shy about asking questions.
Okay, that sounds great.
If you haven't been forewarned.
All right, I, I prefer that, actually. So, the, this is an update from last year's supplement, done in 2018. The data that was utilized to prepare this report is the 2014 through 2018 American Community Survey, which is prepared by the US Census Bureau. And that data was made available on December 19th of last year. So, it is the most current data that was utilized to update this report. Please note, unless it's in the report itself, that it did not utilize that particular data source, it will be noted in the report. I did not choose the 2018, just the annual update or estimates that provided by the US Census Bureau, as it has a much higher percentage margin of error. And I felt this was more appropriate to get a better understanding of the city and the, and the demographics. So, this report is based also, I'll, excuse me, can I get you to the clicker? It also builds upon the baseline information, as mentioned earlier, in, in the city of Arvada from last year's report. And then it also does a comparative analysis of Arvada with eight peer cities, and that's utilized to benchmark, and that way we can do a comparison of how our trends are changing, and how we're doing in relationship with these other communities as well. The data helps us understand our community, allocating resources, and planning for the future. And as I mentioned earlier, the peer cities were chosen because they were the most similar municipalities within the Denver metro area. And then in addition, the data analysis also utilizes data over time, so that you can see the trends as they relate to earlier timeframes, and see if there's a significant change between those dates. Arvada is the fifth largest city in the
Mr. Marias, again.
Patty, sorry.
It's all right.
Just wanna interrupt you, interrupt you real quick on, on this point about these cities that we compared to. I'd love to see, when we do these demographics in the future, in addition to these cities that are selected because they're most similar to us size-wise and whatnot, but also see the ones that are closest to us, even though they're smaller, and I think specifically of Wheat Ridge and Golden.
Okay.
Because even though they are of different sizes, their proximity makes them eminently comparable to us.
Okay.
And so, it'd be something I'd love to see in the future as we do these.
All right, thank you for that comment.
Sure.
I certainly can include that in future analysis. So, we're the fifth largest city in the metro region, with a population of 120,492, and we're also the seventh largest city in Colorado. Our population has increased 18% since 2000, and then also the change of population has changed 13.2% since the year 2010. And then from last year's data, from 2017 to this, 2018 updated information, the change in population was 1.4%. That was a slight increase, and our growth average is 1% since 2000, and the average growth rate of our community is 1.7% since 2010. And this, again, has remained pretty consistent with the overall trends, other than the lower, we've, the 18% over since 2000, since the year 2000. We also have actual population growth from 2000 shown on this particular graph. It shows, that is the blue line, or, excuse me, the blue line, and the red line represents the population projections from the 2014 comprehensive plan. As you can tell, we're pretty much on track with the comprehensive plan projections. We're projected to have an Arvada population of 141,187 by 2035, and we're, that would be an approximate 17% increase from our current population. The next map illustrates the growth of the city of Arvada from 2010 to 2018. As you can see, we're in new development and is occurring in the northwest part of Arvada. The growth rate is 12.5%, and growth in the central and eastern parts of the city continue to be low. An interesting note with this map, it also correlates with the significant portion of the areas that also have the highest median household income levels, with the, where the growth has been the highest in the city. For the age demographics in our city, the median age has, continues to increase, and it did increase rather significantly from last year. It increased 1.7 years to 41.8 is the median age in the city of Arvada, and we, we actually moved to the highest ranking based on those peer cities in doing our comparison. And that has increased significantly from the year 2000, which was 37.2 years as our median age. And again, this is consistent with other data throughout the report, that we have a continued increase of age groups within the city, specifically above 50 years and older. In the city, we also, our median age, as I mentioned earlier, is 41.8 years of age, and the population, the percentage of population in the city that is over 65 years or older, considered our seniors, is 16.9%. Again, we're the highest in the ranking of our peer cities for that demographic. And then in addition, we continue, it, it continues to increase each year, and whereas 38% of the population, which is considered more the baby boomer, not just specifically the seniors, of 50 ages, 50 years or more, continues to increase, and all of these increased age demographics continues to be a strong influence and factor in our community, such as housing, and play, and, excuse me, aging in place needs.
Okay, just real quick, one thing I would add in here is the county, would be interesting in the county. You have Colorado and United States at the bottom.
Okay.
If you can add Jefferson County into that line.
How about Adams County as well? Since the small, we're a small portion.
Yeah, that's fine. It just gives us a better feel of how we compare in the county, because you do have our other communities, but some of the older population could be in the county as well.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Again, ages 65 years and older, this, this is still something that is very important to our, to our community, in which there's one in six people in Arvada who are 65 years or older, and again, that keeps increasing slightly. It increased 0.1% from last year's information. Again, it's a significant portion, 50.6% increase of seniors since the year 2000, and the, and again, the median age has increased 1.7%, and Arvada continues to lead in that trend here in our, in the metropolitan area. This was a different trend for this year. The largest age groups, there was a tie between 30 to 34 years of age, and 50 to 54 years of age, at 7.6 each. The, those age groups, I am, there's a trend that there's, the age groups are getting, were decreasing in percentage of younger age groups. It's only 23% of the population is 19 years or younger, and yet, we're still increasing the lar, the older age groups, in particular, the middle range, and then specifically, as with the senior housing, or the senior age group, is 50 and above is steadily increasing consistently throughout, since the year 2000. And again, the years of 19 years or younger has remained the same, although it's significantly less than the year 2000. City of Arvada remains the most homogeneous of peer cities, in which we have 91.5% white population. The next race demographic is 2.6 of persons who consider themselves with two or more races, and then the single race, 2.1% were, of the population is, is Asian, and 1.3% is African-American.
I wanna make a comment that, as I keep looking at these statistics, we've had conversations in the past about, you know, we've had reports and research brought to us, where we've been compared to Aurora, and I keep looking at these, thinking, there is nothing in these statistics that make me change my perspective on anything that compares us to Aurora, because it is, it is younger, it is much greater in population, it is much more diverse. I, you know, to me, I think Lakewood, looking at all these groups of cities is really the closest to Arvada. So, I think that in the future, if we ever get reports that compare us to Aurora, we really need to look at those very carefully, and say, you know, how can we really compare ourselves to Aurora? Very, very different in demographics.
In this particular case, it was a comparative use to determine more of how diverse other communities were.
No, I wasn't referring to this report.
Oh, okay.
I'm referring to other reports that we've gotten.
Oh, I see.
Where Arvada is being compared to Aurora.
Okay.
We've been, we've had transportation reports compared to Aurora, we've had business reports compared to Aurora. We are very different from Aurora.
Okay.
Demographically.
All right, thank you. That's okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
A point that's been previously made by several of us, when someone tried to say, well, compared to Aurora, it was, we don't compare to Aurora, nor do we want to, in a lot of ways.
Well, I appreciate your input, so thank you. And I'll make notes for that next time. Hispanic community, it basically has remained the same. The overall trend is from the year 2000. It has increased from 9.8% to 14.4%. So, the diversity of the Hispanic and Latino residents in the city has remained a little bit constant over the last few years. Foreign-born population, again, this is, we're one of the, one of the lowest in the city, or the, in comparison to the peer cities that we use for the report, in that we have 5.4%, which is significantly different from other communities. And the largest proportion of foreign-born population is from Europe and Asia, and, and a majority of the population speaks only English with Spanish, only at about a 5% six, 5.6%. Households within the community, we have a number, we have 47,032 households ranking fourth, in comparison to the other communities, and approximately 65.5% of the family holds, households, and there are approximately 34.5% of the non-family households. This is a little bit different from last year, in which there was a 1.1 difference for both of the family households and the non-family households. The family households decreased, and the non-family households increased approximately 1% each.
Remind me the definition of non-family households.
The non-family household is, is a householder living alone, or with non-relatives only. Whereas a family household is a householder living with one or more people related to them by birth, marriage, or adoption. And the householder and all the people in the household related to that person are family members.
Okay, thank you.
And that's directly from the definition, from the ACS. In the city, the average household is 2.48. Again, it's slightly decreasing over time, and remains fairly constant since the year 2000. The average family size is 3.02, and there has been no changes since last year. And again, both of these, the average family size and the average household, are slightly declining since 2000, and they're remaining fairly constant since that date. So, there, it's, it's not a number that we have seen change, and nor has it been reflected this year as well. However, it, I think it's important to note that 28.7 of the households have school-aged children, and that has declined from 1% from last year. Households, there are the number of persons in, in the households themselves, based on one, two, three, or four or more. There are 62.4% of residents are in one-to-two-person households, and 28.7 of these households have school-aged children. This isn't, I, actually, this is an interesting trend to point out, is that the distribution of persons per household has been changing slightly, and the, it appears that those ages are increasing as well, so it might possibly reflect that the ages in the household, there may be more adult children within those households. And in, for example, having four or more persons has increased over 1%, and those with one person or less has decreased. So, I think it's an interesting trend to watch in our future analysis. Even though the average household sizes remain the same, it's the number of persons within a household and their age that is changing, aging. Then the senior households, they're over 65 years old, there are 29.6 persons, proportion of our population, and a significant portion of, of those persons are female, 73%. And so, this continues to increase, increased 0.8% from last year. And again, we're highest compared to our peer cities, and we're also 2.7% above the state average, and we're nearly 1% above the US average for the number of senior households. This, this continued rise in single-person household in the senior community is maybe a consideration for continued need of housing for this age group.
Yeah, it's interesting, because that's very consistent with what Mr. Talbot's brought to us year after year, in terms of our needs for, for, to a large extent, senior citizen female. So, that's validation.
This map shows the average households, and where they're located within our community. The darker green and green are above the average household size of 2.5 or higher, and the brown or lighter yellow areas are, are below the average size. And it's interesting to note, again, that you can see that the more, the development in northwest part of the city has the higher household size as well. The income, median income for this, for the city is $80,055, and the median family income is $99,993. I would like to point out, last year's data used the annual rate information, whereas, again, staff utilized the 2014 to 2018 five-year estimate, as it had a lower, a much lower margin of error, and so, it felt this was more appropriate. However, they're very consistent still with the data, with the, with the values of last year.
And maybe you don't have this data, maybe it was Ed that has it, but is there any data out there that shows what would be the minimum household income required to, I guess, live in Arvada? We used to have that number, but I have a feeling it's moved.
I don't have that data that specific, no.
Yeah, does Ed have that? Do you know if, maybe they have it? Like, what is it for house, vehicle, you know, groceries, that kinda stuff? There was a, there was like an average, at one point, I remember it being like $73,000. You had to make a income of $73,000 to basically bottom-barrel live in Arvada for rents and all that, the price here. Anything below that would've been maybe considered poverty in our city, because they can't pay their bills. Do we have that, or is that something that Ed would have?
I don't, we don't have it here. It may be something that Ed could get. I mean, there are so many factors related to that. A lot of it has to do with the price of housing, so you, what you could do is say, the area, the AMI, the area median income relative to that, and then show at 80%, 60%, 40%, what are the availabilities, and then how you would be able to live in those different categories. I know that we have housing available at those different categories, how much housing, and those types of things, so all of that plays into the factor. But I definitely think that, I've seen some of those statistics that Ed's presented.
Yeah, maybe that's something we can get to add on to this chart, just, because, I mean, I appreciate seeing, because this number, at least last, what I recall, this number seems to have increased.
It has.
And, and to me, I think quite a bit, actually, at least higher than what I thought it was, maybe by 10, 20%. So, it would be interesting how that might play into affordability of Arvada.
A future slides, where we're talking about poverty, and that's only based off of exceeding 30% of their income to be able to accommodate their rent. So, it, unfortunately, I'd So it, unfortunately, I don't have that specific a statistic.
Yeah, because I think Dr. Cog has one that's based on rent and transportation, or housing and transportation, which should not exceed more than fifty percent of your income.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe there's some way you can mix in some statistics around what Dr. Cog's percentage is to maybe come to that formulation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Simpson.
Um, would it be possible to break these numbers down by district? Because I, I highly suspect that we are having a, a bit of a skewed effect here from West Arvada versus East Arvada.
Hmm, and there is, um, the map, uh, there is a slide that shows where the distribution of the average income is. Um, and so you're correct, you can tell that it is in specific areas versus spread. It's ob- it's obviously, this is the median, not, yeah. Um, I know we can get it by census tracts, so I certainly can add to that.
Something like that would be really useful.
Okay.
Could help us sort of triangulate the needs of citizens in different parts of the city, is what I'm thinking.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, the, and here's the Arvada income household distribution, uh, highlighted the over a hundred thousand, um, average income, and that is approximately forty percent of our population or of the households have over a hundred thousand. And again, the distribution of that was relative to the, uh, new developments occurring in the northwest part of the, of the city. Those have the higher income averages. And then the, this is just a slight increase from last year's data, and Arvada's median family income is ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. Um, and then while we're ranked higher in some of the other categories for the household, it's, um, important to note that the median non-family income is forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-one. So that's a much lower rate compared to other communities and, and compared to that, the median average, excuse me, median household income. Here, here's the poverty level. Again, this is taken by, it's just straight income, and if it, if their rent goes above thirty percent of their income, then that's considered, um, above poverty. And so in this particular case, we still have a lower amount, um, for families within the city, three point six percent. However, children under eighteen is still the highest proportion of this group, which is six point two percent for our community. The Arvada, it, and education and, and employment within the city is still remain relatively the same. The bachelor's degree, there's thirty-eight point seven percent of our community that has a higher level of education, and it, and that correlates to the higher median earnings as well. And the continued trend of proportion of residents in the management, business, science, and arts category is still continue to increase and currently at forty-six thou- forty-six percent at this time. This was the slide I was referencing before, which shows the Arvada income by census block tract or census block group, and so, again, you can see the dark green areas are the higher income areas, and those are occurring primarily in the northwest part of the community or on the west side. And then the lighter green area is actually the, not the lightest, excuse me, the second lightest green is, second green is then above a hundred thousand. And then below that with the, kind of the mid, I think, mid-colored green, that would go below the hundred thousand mark, and then the other income by census tract that we have called out here is thirty, thirty, excuse me, thirty-one thousand if, sixty-two thousand, and that's the yellow areas. So again, the proportion, the higher income proportion areas are occurring in the more recently developed areas as well. The housing tenure for our community is seventy-three point eight percent of the housing is owner-occupied, and twenty-six point two percent of the housing is renter-occupied, and that's relatively the same as previous years. The housing types within the city are seventy-one point one percent are single-unit detached, and multifamily is approximately twenty-one percent. Um, these, this is the cost of renters spending more than thirty percent of their in- income. Over last year, the amount was sixty-two percent in two thousand seventeen, whereas this year's data indicated there was fifty-one percent. Uh, this is, I'm not, is a trend we should follow, and, and that if, I don't know if that was an anomaly that occurred last year. Uh, the current rate of fifteen, fifty-one percent is more similar to previous years, whereas last year it had the much higher, um, amount of sixty-two percent for the renters' spending on their income.
Mr. Marriott's got a question.
I have a, a question about just the terminology on this. It says renters spending more than thirty percent of income decreased sixty-two percent to fifty-one percent. So what was it before? Did it decrease from sixty-two percent of renters to fifty-one percent of renters?
Yes, it was sixty-two percent last year.
Okay.
And it decreased, apologies for the confusion.
Decreased eleven percent, not sixty, not sixty-two percent.
This year, yes.
Okay. So I want to, the, uh, I, I think, I give you credit here for finding that or picking that out of the data. As someone who owns rental properties, I can tell you this, the, the pendulum is swinging the other way. Um, the, uh, there's less competition for places available for rent as a, as a housing provider. Uh, I have fewer people to choose from this year than I did last year and less than two years ago, and, uh, it's more of a buyer's market, less of a seller's market, which is what always makes housing markets move. Um, and it's clear that the market is moving, and this data, I think, shows that, and I, and I would suspect, and I'd be willing to bet any of my colleagues money if they want to, that next year, this will, will be down again, um, as we go through one of these kind of real estate cycles. But, uh, whatever you use to pull this out.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that was good work because, you know, we're just starting to see it in the, in the real world over the last year, you know, slowly over the last year, but you show it definitively in the data, and, and I agree that it's completely true, um, what you see here.
Thank you. Uh, transportation trends for the city, again, we continue to have, um, higher percentage of our residents u- utilizing their car. They drive eighty-one point six percent, drive alone to work. Um, however, the working at home has increased from six point four percent in mid-two thousand fifteen to seven point seven percent, and that was a trend that continued this last year as well. It continued to increase. Arvada remains reliant upon their cars and commuting. Uh, alternatives to driving only makes up about eleven percent of work trips, and in comparison to the metro area, we have one of the smallest percentage of proportions of residents using transit to commute to work.
It'll be interesting to see if the gold line will have any impact on that or not.
Yes, I, I actually was, I, that's a note that I have as well, that, that we, it would be important to see if that does improve with more access and a continuous line operating at this point. Vehicles and households within the community, our average is two point eight vehicles per household.
Mr. Marriott pushes that number way up.
I'm disappointed I didn't get us higher.
Okay. We are high compared to our other communities. Uh, another, another item to note is that owner-occupied households with no vehicles is one percent, whereas renter-occupied households with no vehicle is approximately ten percent. So it is, um, different distribution for renter versus owner-occupied.
I, I think this highlights an important, that when we talk about affordable housing and transit and where it all comes together and where we place it, uh, is, it needs to be very thoughtful, you know, putting affordable housing in District Four does not make any sense when there's no mass transit out there. So, you know, um, when we do our strategic discussions, this is probably another area to highlight.
And allowing less parking in those buildings.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Exactly.
So a summary of this report is that even, uh, the city continues to increase positively, and we're doing well compared to many communities, and we will change that in the future, um, but in, based on the analysis we've had, that I wanted to be consistent with previous reports. Uh, the Arvada population continues to increase, we have the highest proportion. Um, since two thousand, we've had increased diversity of Hispanic-Latino population. The median and family out, household income is increasing, and it appears that poverty is decreasing, however, poverty for children under eighteen is still a high percentage of that population, and the housing cost burden for renters is decreasing. The items that were significantly changed from last year's, I've previously mentioned them, but those that have changed significantly is the cost burden for renters declined quite a bit from previous year. Um, the thirty to thirty-four-year-olds and the fifty to fifty-four-year-old groups, it was a transition for those to be the largest age group and is representative of the aging population here in our city as well. Colorado Department of Local Affairs has indicated through their studies and, um, information that the economic for growth for Colorado and the region is slowly continuing to slow down, and is forecasted to continue to slow, and I think it's important that we also anticipate for those statewide trends here as well, or keep eye, an eye on what these indicators are that may help, give us a better clue if that's affecting our community. For example, if there's, income levels are decreasing and employment opportunities, uh, these are important to monitor in our future analysis. This next steps, uh, as you know, the U.S. Census is conducting their survey, their twenty-twenty survey this year. Um, it's surveyed, managed, dated by the Constitution, and it's done every ten years. And the information I gathered was that this will init- be initiated April first of this year. So it'll be interesting to see with this more detailed or, uh, census efforts on the Bureau, how that will affect and, and give us better data, I believe, next year. And then again, the data, the update will occur again in two thousand twenty-one. Did you have any questions?
Any other questions from council or comments?
I have a comment, mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Pushed my button. Um, I noticed that this morning on the news, it did say that the, the people coming in and leaving the state was, I don't know if you saw that, was neutral, so.
Saw that.
It said slowing is growing, so it does coincide with what you've said. But no, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I always find this fascinating, and it really does assist us as we go into our retreat process and have our further discussions, and not unlike the, you know, citizen survey, and, uh, we have a lot of different data points that we can utilize, and welcome aboard.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate your assistance.
And I appreciate your comments as well, so I'll take note of that for the next information.
Good.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Devon, anything else you need from us with regard to the work?
No, Mr. Mayor, uh, and members of the council, but I do appreciate the comments that I think several of you made, uh, regarding the, this presentation of this information as we head into our retreat on Friday. Uh, and just a reminder, uh, earlier, I think I'd given a start time at nine o'clock. Eight o'clock is going to be the start time for our retreat on Friday at, uh, Community First Foundation.
Okay, be there, be square, or?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, now we'll move on. Is there any individual would like to address city council on public comment at this time? Seen none, I'll close that public comment portion and reports from city council. Mr. Pfeifer.
Actually, what I want to do is ask council, I would like to request that at our next business meeting, which is the twentieth, twenty-seventh, that's a business meeting?
Uh, yes, we moved the twenty-seventh from our workshop to a business meeting because we're losing a business meeting on the twentieth because it's a holiday.
Martin Luther King, okay. So on the twenty-seventh, I'd like to ask if council would support, um, a discussion to, um, rehear the appeal of the certificate of compliance for the Grandview Station. Um, I think it's a good opportunity to have that discussion to see if, uh, we would be open, uh, to a rehearing to add the developer to that discussion.
So is the request to take a vote on the twenty-seventh on a?
Yeah.
Motion to re-
Yeah, I think on the twenty-seventh, uh, actually take a vote on, on the rehearing of, of that.
On whether or not to have a rehearing?
Yeah, exactly.
And then have the rehearing at a subsequent date?
Thank you for helping me through this. I've been up all night because of wind, and my council member has not taken care of that. Um, I'm twenty-four hours now. So yes, that's the question, is I'd like to just make sure people know that I'm asking that on the twenty-seventh, that we have not only the discussion, but to, a vote to, um, rehear the appeal of certificate of application.
So we would take a vote on the twenty-seventh to have, if, if the vote were successful, to have a hearing at a subsequent date?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Is the majority of council in favor of having that?
Yes.
Okay, then we will, on the twenty-seventh, uh, Mr. Devon, if you would add an agenda item for a motion, uh, perhaps drafted by competent legal counsel, so that we are, uh, proper in terms of how that's framed, um, and then we'll have a discussion that evening, and we'll see where that takes us. Very good. Anything else from council in terms of, uh, issues or matters? Ms. Miller?
Just wondering if anybody has seen any of council member, um, Pfeifer's signs in West Arvada?
Because my council member did not take care of the wind problem before I moved out there, but yes, if anyone's seen my signs, they have blown all over West Arvada, so I'm sorry, get them back to me, I will pick them up, I feel bad. Thank you.
His shed blew away, it was, that's-
So my, to explain, my shed exploded in the wind and took four hundred signs and blew them all over Candela's, so I picked up twelve, that's all I can find. If anyone out there is seeing me can see them, uh, uh, call me, my cell phone's all over, I will pick them up, I just feel bad that it's littering, and I want them picked up, so.
Three hundred and eighty-eight signs.
More to go, and I'll be on the trails tomorrow night looking, so.
I think we need a code enforcement vault.
Please forgive me, thank you, and everyone's picking on me because I'm new to the area.
That's, the people of Westminster are wondering why?
Why is our, it's all over Stanley Lake area.
Yes. Okay, very good. Okay, any other council reports? Seen none? Probably, Mr. Devon, you shouldn't allow us to not meet for such a long period of time, we get a little, little pudgy. Mr. Devon, do you have any reports you'd like to make?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, one of, we will be asking, uh, the mayor and city council for some, um, assistance as, uh, next Monday, um, when we do meet regarding the boards and commission selection process. We need to form into, I, I think in the past, what we've done that very, as far as I can tell, very successfully, is the council's formed into teams to interview boards and commission applicants, and we need to, to get that, um, formulated, um, by at least next Monday, so the city clerk and, and her staff can formulate, you know, put together the applications for the specific teams of council members that will review the boards and commission applicants.
Very good, and as we discussed earlier, I think, um, I was paired with Mr. Marriott last year because Ms. Miller was out of town on that night, so let's put those two back together, and I'll be the floating. No?
You can have the, um, absent on the day.
Well, I'll be absent next week, that's why I'm saying.
No, on the twenty-fourth of-
Oh, on the twenty, when you're actually doing it, I'll be absent, so all the more reason why we need to.
Would, would the, would the council like us to maybe take a drafting of, of forming the teams and getting that?
Sure.
Why don't, why don't we do that, and then if, then you can let us know if we're o- if it's okay?
Very good.
All right, we'll do that.
Very good. Nothing else from you, Mr. Devon? Ms. Morris, anything from you?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. We stand adjourned. Off to a great start.